Mr. Chair, Mr. Secretary, can you please call the meeting order? This is June 13th, 2024, Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission. Call the order, please, whenever you're ready.
And a pledge of allegiance.
Yep. First, we gotta call the order. Call to order. And pledge of allegiance.
No, we do the pledge first.
Well, that's not what's written here. I'm just going by what's written. I'm calling the order. Pledge allegiance. All right. Who's telling you about that, Lori?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States, mayor, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fire evacuation. If there happens to be a fire, a fire alarm, or any other type of emergency, you could exit to my left, to your right, behind you, down the stairs, and please get as far away from the building as you can. Mr. Secretary?
Yes. Roll call. Terrence Lynch?
Here.
Linda DeGray is absent. John Petronella is here. Francis Alamo?
Here.
Joseph Muley?
Here.
Kenneth Alinsky?
Here.
Vinnie Grillo?
Here.
Christian D'Antonio?
Here.
Patrick Hooper?
Here.
And Walter Crizell?
Here.
All present, except for Commissioner DeGray, who is not with us tonight. And who's sitting in for? She's a... Nobody needs to sit in for her tonight, right? We have enough? Uh-huh. Yeah.
I'm sorry. Somebody should be seated in her...
All right. So we'll look at... Let's see. There's my list here. Hang on one second. Walter? Is it Walter? What is this? This is June? Walter? Commissioner Crizell will be seated tonight. You're welcome. Okay. Approval of minutes of May 23rd, 2024.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of May 23rd, 2024.
I got a second, please. Motion made and seconded. Any corrections, amendments?
I'm sorry, who seconded that?
Seconded by... Terrence. Anything anybody would like to talk about on this? Okay, seeing none, show of hands. All favor of the minutes?
Aye.
All in favor. We have a town attorney's report in here. I believe I seen it today. Yep. And it's just the update, as usual. See, the dates of some of these go quite ways back. Litigation takes time. Motion to accept the town attorney's report.
Show moved.
I had a second, please. Seconded by Commissioner Alinsky. All in favor? All discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All approved. We accept the attorney's report. Zoning enforcement officer. Is he? No reports this evening. Is he back?
He just came back.
Okay, that's good. Glad he's back and feeling well. Public participation at this time in the agenda. We invite the public to come up and speak to the board of the committee here. Anything that's not on tonight's agenda. Anything that's not on tonight's agenda. For the second time, would anybody in the public like to come up and speak? Seeing none, seeing nobody here, I guess we're all set with that one. I shouldn't say nobody here. There is people here, but they are... There is people here.
Nobody wants to speak.
Do we have any bond releases? No bond releases. Okay. Administrative approvals.
Yes, we have one this evening. SPR 1939, 77 Hazard Avenue, Unit K, which is the plaza where the Smith Farms Ice Cream is, if everybody knows that, over on Hazard Avenue, across from Big Y. The site plan change of use for a tattoo parlor formerly a medical office. Johnny Orasco Vasquez, applicant owner, map 56, lot 37, BL Zone. And I spoke with the chairman on this, and basically, it's the same... The same space, the same amount of parking that's required. So really, it's just one tenant moving out and one tenant moving in, basically, from medical to personal service.
Any questions for Lori on this? Okay, all in favor of the administrative approval? Show hands.
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor. Lori, a question on any minute. Did you do any other administrative approvals of the carnival? I see a carnival out there. That was since last week. Did they have to do anything?
Those are temporary permits through zoning permits.
That just came in through you? That's administrative as well?
Yeah. And I think that one we've had before, so we're allowed to re-up it every year.
Right.
They're allowed to.
And it showed up after our last meeting, so I didn't remember.
Yeah. Right, because it wouldn't come through the commission, because it's... It's through the department that they get approval. They originally come here, and once they get that?
Yep.
They can just utilize it every year, provided there aren't any issues.
As long as it's gonna be a continuous event, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And the other thing is raisin cane. Anything there administratively?
Not to my knowledge.
Because in their parking lot, they have a refrigeration unit that's been put up there. It's in a... It's in a parking spot and right in the parking lot, which you can see right from Elm Street, which I don't believe was part of the approval. It came once, it left, and it's back again. And then more to the north side of the parking lot, in another parking spot, they got a dumpster just sitting there. And I think those... Both those things are violation of their approval, I believe. Unless they want to come back in and we could entertain it. The dumpster is not screened, the refrigerator is not screened. They've taken up two parking spots. I don't know if that messes up their parking calculations or not either.
I'll have...
You haven't seen that? You haven't heard from them, right?
No, I actually had not heard those concerns. So I'll have Rick take a look at that.
Yep. Okay.
The CEO.
See what they have to do, if they have to come back. And so that's it. I have a relative that could have been administratively approved. Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Number 10, director planner report.
Let's see. Oh, you all should have received an email regarding the CCAPA Housing Forum. If you're interested, they're actually trying to get feedback from commissioners and staff as to whether you might attend. It's not like you can't attend after this weekend, but they would like an RSVP by June 15th. So if you want to attend, it's gonna be a $20 fee. We'll find the money if anybody really wants to go. I'm gonna go. I'm sure Georgie's probably gonna go.
Was it a Wednesday, I believe?
It's a Wednesday.
Yeah.
And is it during the day or is it at night?
It's all day.
All day.
It's in New Haven, right around the corner.
Does it have to be in New Haven at 8:30 in the morning? Don't they know about... You know, there's a northern part of the state.
So when they have 8:30 starting times...
Nobody knows about the northern part of Connecticut. I don't get it.
Well, because, you know, the CCAPA covers 169 municipalities.
We're here.
Okay, but they're there, so, you know.
Everything's downstate.
They mix it up.
I'm not kidding.
So if anybody's interested, just let Donna or I know, and we'll keep it in mind. And if you change your mind, that's fine, too. But it could be a pretty interesting forum, and it's something where you could go to this and kind of see what the planners go through with our training, so...
So it's eight hours credit, too?
Yeah, we get credit for it.
You get four hours credit.
Oh, actually, you guys were gonna get credit for it, too. Actually, you were gonna get all four hours.
Get four hours, yeah. And you get a box lunch.
Oh, we get a box... Oh, lunch, too?
CCAPA usually has some pretty good food, breakfast and lunch.
That means we'd have to leave here very early.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's true. I know.
Can I sleep through the class?
No.
Is there anybody thinking? So maybe Lori wouldn't know upfront, or is this...
I'm considering.
Considering.
All right. So I don't think you need to finalize your decision. They're just trying to get a feel for maybe how many people actually are going to come, and how many are planners and how many are commissioners, so...
And the actual date of the event is, again, September 11th?
September 11th. 9/11.
Oh. Yeah, I'll be a possible, too.
Okay. Could be fun.
It's gonna be where we go after. It's gonna be where we go after.
Well, there you go, because you don't want to drive home right afterward.
We have many places after. You can get in more south. You can swim back.
We can get head back this way, maybe make a pit stop. Who knows?
Okay.
All right, so you're still up, Lori.
Okay, moving on. We hired an assistant planner. Woo-hoo! He's got a master's of urban and regional planning from Albany University, and he's starting July 8th. So we're very excited about that.
Very good.
You tell us his name yet, or no?
His name is Stephen Heine.
Heine, Mr. Heine.
Yep, Mr. Heine. And super nice dude.
Good.
Really, we're really exciting, and he's very... He's very into the planning realm. He knows the lingo, he knows the processes, and...
Connecticut person, or is it...
Well, he actually is originally from Connecticut.
Oh, good.
So he's happy to kind of move back.
Good.
So he would start earlier, but he has to find a place to live, so... Per the chairman's request, Don Poland was supposed to come here on June 27th and give a kind of overall view of where we're going with the zoning regulations, but I guess you're gonna have some issues attending that meeting, so he has agreed to come July 11th.
Great. 11th.
11th.
Thank you for that.
And that's it?
Okay, all in favor of accepting Lori's report, director of planning? Show hands. All in favor? All approved? Okay. Any outside correspondence? Any outside correspondence? Seeing none, we'll move on to commissioners' correspondence. Anything? What do you got, anybody? Continued public hearings? We do not have any. On to number 14, new public hearings. There is none. Number 15, old public hearing. Old public hearings. SPR 1938, Mr. Secretary?
Yep. SPR number 1938, Shaker Road and North Maple Street. Site plan review for construction of an indoor self-storage facility with associated site improvements. Pullman Realty applicant, Mark Pollock, owner, map 81, lot 9, I-1 zone.
I'm sorry, that would be for correction for the record. That would be 15, old business, not old public hearing. My apologies. Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm very happy to be here tonight. I didn't think I would be. As I indicated when we were here last, there were really two open issues. One is there's a request by Commissioner DeGray to see elevations, which you'll see tonight. The other was the sidewalk issue. We were asking to be able to defer construction until the point that there was... Sidewalks were near us.
Can I just stop you for a second? We get your name and address for the record, both of you, again, please?
I'm sorry. It wasn't a public hearing. I didn't think I needed to do that. No, no problem at all. It's Ken Slater. I'm an attorney at Howland and Sage, representing the applicant.
Sorry. Rebecca Lee with Arlevak Associates, located at 40 School Street in Westfield, Massachusetts.
Thank you both. I appreciate that.
No problem. And again, I'm very happy to be here tonight, because we had received the staff report that recommended the inclusion of sidewalks. And I don't stand before commissions and make bluffs and say that the project's not gonna work if I really believed that wasn't true. I was informed by our client, who learned that day, that they couldn't make the numbers work financially, and that's why I shared that with you. Very happy to be back, because given more time, they were able to sharpen their pencils, and I think in large part because of the slope and the grade, didn't need as much site work as might be needed to put in sidewalks elsewhere, they'll be able to do that. So the revised site plan that's been submitted includes the sidewalk. So I think we've closed out the issues, I mean, subject, of course, to the presentation tonight, that we were dealing with last time we were here. I'm transferring that over to Rebecca.
That's good to hear. Thank you. And there was some outstanding issues we had, right? Elevations, I believe, were by Commissioner Petronella.
Yep.
Commissioner DeGray, wasn't it? John?
I remember hearing something about it.
Yep. So since our last meeting on May 23rd, we've provided some photos of similar self-storage buildings that we anticipate for this site. And we've also provided some elevations as well of the interior building and what, you know, an end building would look like with the metal siding and the overhead doors. The intent is to keep the color scheme as, you know, neutral and blending in with the nature and background as possible, so evergreen, beige colors. And that, you know, here's some photos of colors that Tracti, which is one of the self-storage manufacturers, has provided. And then the elevations. Then I also provided some more information. I apologize, I forget which commissioner requested for the details on the sloping of the finished floor elevations, but I did also provide some information on that, as well as some photos of a self-storage facility that we have recently finished construction that had the same 1% slopes with the finished floor elevations. I can run through the revised plans, if that would please the commission?
Sure.
Okay, great. So on the layout and materials plan, we added the sidewalks, as Ken mentioned, four foot wide with five foot offset from the street line along Shaker Road and North Maple Street. We shifted the infiltration basin to the north by six feet. This was a comment from the water department or the water pollution department. They wanted to make sure that they had enough space to access... There's a sewer, existing sewer line along the southern side of the property, so we just wanted to make sure that they had enough space in order to accommodate that.
Is there an easement there for that?
There is. Yep. Yep. We also added an extra parking space to the entrance and also added an electric vehicle parking space. We think the next biggest change here was on the landscaping plan. We extended... Apologize, the PDF, the hatching came up pretty dark. Oh, there we go. So we extended the Loman Seated area all the way to North Maple Street and extended the vegetative buffer as well. So those were, you know, the main changes with the site plans. And as Lori mentioned, we do plan on submitting that A2 survey, if it's amendable to the commission, to incorporate that as a condition.
You don't have it with you tonight?
No, I do not.
I think at the last meeting, was there an outstanding question for the engineer? I see tonight that the engineer has no comments, but was there something you owed the engineer? Or was that all set?
Nope, that was all set. We went through the whole interface with the engineering department during the IWWA approval process.
Okay. All right. Lori, do you have anything to add?
No. As Rebecca relayed, that I would just make a recommendation that the condition require an A2 survey be provided for final plans.
Commissioner Petronella, anything on that for you as far as the elevation, the A2 survey? Are you comfortable with that?
Well, I mean, the condition, the A2 survey, I guess, could be a condition that they have to submit that project to.
Well, if... Yeah. If they don't provide it, then they're not compliant, so...
Because that's what the elevations are gonna show there as well.
No, the elevations, that's not part of the A2 survey.
Okay, we got that.
Survey is more of a boundary survey and certified.
So that'll be separate, because the elevations did come on a new application? I mean, on the update?
Yeah, they sent some... They sent some plans here, and...
Did you have a chance to...
The only thing we don't know is there's no dimensions on it as far as height and so forth. I mean, you know, I'm looking at the photos, and I know what they are, but they don't depict any dimensions on it. Lori, I don't know if that's an issue with staff?
They certainly won't be able to...
They're not scale drawings, or, you know. There's a scale on it, but they're reduced.
Perhaps the applicant can answer that question.
So there are planned dimensions on the buildings, like 180 feet by 20 feet is this building, and then the first building here, 180 feet typical by 40 feet typical, and that's for all of the interior buildings. So I guess from a 2D perspective, we did dimension the buildings. As far as the height goes, I believe we mentioned in the zoning review...
Are they on these drawings that we got in our packet? No?
No, there's...
You received them for this?
This was stamped in June 6th.
Right. These were revised drawings. There was the architectural drawings and renderings. And then the plan said it has the sidewalks on it now.
It talks about the pitch on these.
And then the height is mentioned in the zoning review table on sheet C3, I believe, where it says that it will be less than 25 feet. 25 feet is the, you know, maximum height per that district.
C3?
Yes, C3.
Commissioner Alinsky has a question.
Yeah. What is the height of the door opening?
The overhead door?
The over... Yeah, the overhead door? Yeah.
They vary typically, they're eight feet tall.
Okay. Well, nobody's gonna bang their head.
No.
Okay, thank you.
You brought something up that showed the height on every floor, we don't have that.
On sheet C3?
It's on the drawing.
It's on the big drawing. Okay. All right.
In the zoning review table in the upper right-hand corner, it says height... And then the required, which is the 25 feet, and the proposed is less than 25 feet.
And this was the one that was revised?
Yes.
Is it your intent that these buildings are gonna be 25 feet high?
It's less than 25.
I wouldn't think so.
No, there's no way it's gonna be 25.
They're usually, these buildings are anywhere from 10 to 15 feet. It's a single-story building. We just, you know, don't have the finalized self-storage architectural plans.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah, these doors are probably eight feet tall, more or less. And looking at the photos, there's probably another foot, 22 feet to the eve height. You put it at about 10 feet tall at the eve.
Right.
Would you have an issue stipulating that, for the record, that eve height?
Sorry.
I was wondering. I thought it was me. Would you have an issue stipulating that the eve height won't exceed 10 feet?
I think we can confidently say that the overall, like, maximum height of the building will be less than 15 feet. I think we can confidently say that.
Then that would... For overall maximum height of the building, would take it to the peak or to the ridge.
Yes, sir.
And I don't have a problem with that. When I say eve, I'm looking at, you know, the low point at the edge, about 10 feet, which, when I see these buildings, I think 10 feet is more than enough. But 15 feet of overall height, Lori, do you have no issues with that?
I think that's reasonable. I've recently had a storage facility, and I wanted to say it looked like maybe 12 or 13.
Yeah.
It was a little bit over 10, I think.
They're not... Yeah. Okay. All right.
So 15?
I'm good. Thank you. Yep.
I'll set you up. So just to... So we're sure here, the drawings we got stamped in at June 6th are different from the ones that we got two weeks ago. You had it in here.
Right.
Request the elevations and sidewalks, and everything is in here.
Correct. Those were the revised sheets.
Because I just got a quick look at them when they came... The day they came in, actually. So this is the one that we're gonna be approving.
Should that be in the plan somewhere?
Yeah. But we're gonna make it a condition of that.
All right. Any more questions? Lori, you all set for your comments?
I think we're good.
Anything from the commission? Anybody got any more questions?
I do have two proposed conditions to add.
You haven't written out, or...
Yeah, I can give it to John.
Would you please?
As long as he gives them back.
John, make sure you give them back.
There's... Excuse me, just a question to the staff, through the commission. There's no... There is no longer a... They're no longer seeking a waiver for the sidewalk, so that's out. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It's not that. It's for the parking spaces. So we still have to act on that, correct? Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry. I got a little mixed up there.
The waiver's gonna be a second vote? Separate vote?
Separate vote.
Separate vote and a waiver.
Yeah, we'll... I think we'll act on that first. Are we good to proceed?
Yeah. Is there a motion? There's no more questions, right? Is there a motion to approve SPR 1938?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I want to make a motion to... A motion to approve a waiver to build only seven of the required 50 parking spaces. However, the applicant may install the 43 spaces at a later time if needed, as they're depicted on the plans.
I second the motion.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Yep. Terrence Lynch?
Four.
Frank Alamo?
Four.
Joseph Muley?
Four.
Kenneth Alinsky?
Four.
Vinnie Grillo?
Four.
Walter Crizell?
Four.
And John Petronella is four.
All in favor, none against. Motion passes.
And I'd like to make a motion to approve site plan review number 1983, application for self-storage facility to be located at the southwest corner of Shaker Road and North Maple Street. Pullman Realty LLC applicant, Mark Pollock, owner, map 81, lot 9, in the I-1 zone with the attached... There are now 27 conditions total. 25 is listed and two as follows. Number 26 would be assigned and wet sealed. Number 26 would be assigned and wet sealed A2 survey shall be, survey shall be supplied with the final plans. And condition number 27 would be a maximum height, overall height of the building shall not exceed 15 feet.
Second. Motion made and seconded, any discussion, please? Seeing none, roll call vote?
Terrence Lynch?
Four.
Frank Alimo?
Four.
Joseph Muley?
Four.
Kenneth Olenski?
Four.
Vinnie Grillo?
Four.
Walter Crizell?
Four.
And John Petronella is four.
That's all in favor, none against, application passes. Congratulations, you're welcome to Enfield. Thanks for--
Thank you for your time.
Yep. Number 16, new business. Any new business? 17, other business, just for a point to mention, tonight, everybody has the bylaws. I asked for them last week, I believe everybody should have them. These are the clean, revised, April 11, 2024.
Yep.
We all have the same bylaws.
Yep.
Throw every other one you have away. Any, is there any other new business? Seeing none, we're going to move on. Applications to be received. We have a list of--
Okay, be prepared. Last time we said we had nothing, I think we have eight.
Well, lots happened in--
Okay.
Four or five days.
So public hearing--
One day, right?
Pardon?
It was on my--
Yeah, we're all going to hear them all at one meeting.
Yeah, we'll be here until 3:00 in the morning.
No, 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 no. We'll work it out for you.
We'll let you here with us.
Okay. All right, public hearing 3093 for 368 Elm Street, application for a special use permit to the, for the expansion of a non-conforming structure. Raymond Frost, applicant owner, MAP 74, Lot 212, R-33 Zone. And that's basically an R-17, yeah, an old R-17 situation, where they're just building the house sideways, parallel to the road. So that, that means that they're building the house within the front yard setback. So that's what that's about.
And that's out, 368 Elm?
Yep. Public hearing 3094, Six Lake Drive, application for a special use permit for the expansion of a non-conforming structure. Dana Anderson, applicant owner, Sanford and Kimberly Anderson owners, MAP 98, Lot 11, R-33, and Lake Overlay District Zone. PH 3095, 95 High Street, Units 7 and 8, application for a special use permit for a place of worship. Josu and Sandra Garcia, applicants, Malinas Plaza LLC, owner, MAP 25, Lot 6, TD5 Zone. PH 3096, 254 Post Office Road, application for a special use permit to locate a commercial vehicle at 254 Post Office Road per Section 3.30.13 and Section 9.20. James Wellman, applicant owner, MAP 71, Lot 25, R-88 Zone. Public hearing 3097, 855 Enfield Street and 7, 17, and 21 Elm Street, application for a special use permit modification for the construction of a new commercial building and a site plan review approval for a veterinary tenant. Troyano Properties LLC and A&amp;L Troyano Family LLC, applicant owners. MAP 26, Lot 23, 24, 28, and 29 in the BL Zone. And this, this parcel was recently rezoned from R-33 to BL over here on the other side of the medical building.
Very recently, right? We just did that very recently.
Right, yep. Okay, PH 3098, 1297 Enfield Street, application for a special use permit for elderly housing per Section 4.40.3K, Felician Sisters of North America Real Estate Trust, owners, applicants, MAP 46, Lot 2, HR33 Zone. SPR 1939, 77 Hazard Avenue, Units 7 and 8, application for an administrative approval for tattoo parlor at Smith Farms. Actually, that should have been taken off, but--
That's the one you reported on earlier?
Yep. And SPR 1940, 90 Phoenix Avenue, application for a site plan review for a change of views from office to warehouse manufacturing. Carla Pino, applicant, Hanover Hall Limited Partnership, Spindicker Real Estate Partners owners, MAP 46, Lot 37, in the IP Zone. That's it.
That's it? Well, that's good.
Some of these are short and quick applications.
Are all of these in for the, for the summer slam rush before we close for August? Is that the intent?
And I know of a couple others that are probably coming in, too, so. And that, that doesn't count the ones that we don't know about.
And you're going to, or you and I will figure out what order we want to put these on?
Yeah, Georgie and I have been working on that already. You know, it's like, okay, these ones will probably come in for this next meeting, and then, you know, maybe some of the larger ones come in for the other, and, and then we've, you know, we've only got three meetings left, so.
Well, we have some special meetings coming, that's for sure.
That's up to you, and whether or not the commission is available.
Right, well, we talked about that early on, about the zoning maps and the regulations, so Mr. Poland--
Yeah.
I've spoken to him, Lori's spoken to him, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
Opportunities, has everybody else said with them? I'm sorry. Everybody's good?
Yep.
Opportunities and unresolved issues? Nothing? No? Okay. Executive session? There's no executive session tonight? And the last--
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a motion adjourned? Is there a second? Second. Any discussion?
You missed it by six minutes.
All in favor?
All in.
All in.